You're good to go.
Cool. Um, it is four o'clock and I think almost everyone's here. Welcome. The May first meeting of the Baltimore County Planning Board is called to order. I'm Scott Halupka, Chair of the Board. We will start the meeting with a roll call to account for the members of the board president. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Ray.
Aye.
Mr. Braddy.
Aye.
Ms. Profi.
Aye.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Ms. German.
Aye.
Mr. Heckman.
Aye.
Nice to have you back.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Heinle.
Aye.
Mr. Hinton.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Meneses.
Aye.
Ms. Panero. Let's see her. Mr. Schulman.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Tennant. All right, and we have a new board member joining us tonight, uh, Ms. Lilly.
Hi. I'm here. Nice to meet everybody.
Thank you. Hey.
Welcome.
Will you now please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Um. As I said, before we get going, we have a new board member, Ms. Jessica Lilly. Ms. Lilly, would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Um, sure. I grew up in Dundalk, District Seven, so I'm happy to be representing. Um, I do a lot of community things. I think I do a little bit of everything, but um, I have a son who's graduating, which I'm sorry about being in the car, but his senior baseball game is actually today and I'm, um, so I came out here to do this so that I could not miss the game too. But, um, yeah, I mean, I'm an open book. Any questions I could definitely answer.
I, I, I will say that, that, uh, Jess is my Neighborhood Association President and has been quite active for a number of years, so. I've known her for some time, so we, we welcome you to the board. If you have any questions, please feel free to, to reach out and let us know.
Thank you. I definitely will. I probably will have questions.
Welcome.
Mr. Tennant, I see that you've signed on.
How's it going, everybody?
Nice to have you here. Uh, Ms. Bensley, are there any changes to the tentative agenda as published?
No changes.
In the April 24th email, you received draft minutes from the March 6th meeting. Hopefully, everyone has had an opportunity to review the minutes. Are there any corrections or additions to the March 6th, 2025 meeting minutes? If not, I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes that circulated.
Motion.
Second. Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. First item on our agenda today, we have a presentation by Mr. Chris Weaver of the Research Analysis and the Design Division of the Department of Planning on the 2024 Baltimore County Annual Growth Report. Um, as stated on the action summary, this is a staff report and does not require a public hearing. The board is scheduled to vote on this matter at our next board meeting on May 15th. I'd now like to welcome Mr. Weaver to the meeting.
Thank you, Chairman Halupka and members of the planning board. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I will be introducing the 2024 Annual Report on Growth. Um, the land use article of the Annotated Code of Maryland requires that charter counties prepare an annual report on growth. The report summarizes residential and non-residential development in Baltimore County in 2024, and it analyzes whether the new development is consistent with the county's growth management policies, master plan 2030 land use goals, and state smart growth principles. The report is due to the Maryland Department of Planning by July 1st, 2025. In 2024, a total of 23 residential development plans were approved, including nine major development plans, seven minor subdivisions, three planned unit developments, and four limiteds. Total number of residential units approved in those plans was 1,450. Of those, 60.8% are multifamily, 27% are single-family attached, 12% are single-family detached, and none are single-family semi-detached. 91% of the proposed units are located inside the urdle. In 2024, 42 non-residential development plans were approved for commercial, mixed-use, industrial, institutional, and office uses totaling 2,78587 square feet of approved space. 99% of the approved square footage is located inside the urdle. In comparison, 2023 saw 29 non-residential development plans approved with a total of 4,170,173 square feet of space. Here you can see that in 2024, the number of constructed residential units with occupancy permits was 889, which was similar to 2023's number of 871 permits and slightly, and significantly lower than 2022, which, uh, had 1,230 new residential units. Among all 889 new residential units that were permitted for occupancy, 93.6% of the total units were within the urdle. So you can see a map of the residential occupancy permits in 2024. 99% of all non-residential permitted construction was situated within the urdle. Occupancy permits for non-residential construction indicate that industrial development represented the largest use type, accounting for 64.3% of the total floor space, floor area among new buildings in 2024. Here you can see the distribution of non-residential occupancy permits for 2024. Baltimore County updates the development capacity analysis as needed after major land use updates or after a major rezoning process such as C, CZMP, which occurs every four years. The analysis based in a, on a GIS model that identifies residential vacant or underdeveloped parcels and calculates the potential for new residential units based on zoning, land use, growth tiers, and environmental constraints in the model year for land within the priority funding area of the county that is also known as our urdle. Most recent development capacity model from 2024 predicts that the number of potential units could range from 8,857 units with a moderate scenario to 23,453 residential units, assuming the full zone buildout. However, most units do not build out to density. With an average unit buildout over the last three years of 997 per year, land inside the urdle will reach total buildout in nine to 24 years. Keep in mind, these figures do not include redevelopment potential and densification of housing that the CT, CCC, and MU districts provide to commercially zoned lands. In the 2024 to 2025 school year and projected for the following three years, 25 through 27, the full-time enrollment of 13 elementary schools, zero middle schools, and six high schools are at or over 115% of their state-rated capacities. School impact analysis will be performed for each proposed development project with a residential component to determine whether a school district is overcrowded under Section 32-6-103 of the Baltimore County Code. Department of Public Works and Transportation indicated that there were no deficiencies in public water status known to exist in 2024. DPWT has continued the metering of 10 remaining sewer relief point locations. Public Works have completed several rehabilitation projects and are now performing post-construction monitoring to determine the effectiveness of the projects. In addition, projects are in design and under construction, which will eventually allow the elimination of the areas of special concern shown in the map. There are 10 F-level intersections and one E-level intersection that were proposed on the 2024 Basic Service Transportation map that would control development. Here you can see a list of those intersections. In 2024, 42 road projects were constructed, extended, or relocated totaling 6,925, or excuse me, 6.925 miles in length. That is a lot less than I initially stated there. All 42 projects were located within the urdle. This table shows the names and lengths of the roads. 698 acres of preserved land were added in 2024, yielding 71,592 acres total of preserved land in Baltimore County. In comparison, 955 acres and 1,625 acres were added to the easements in 2023 and 2022, respectively. The largest addition to preserve land in 2024 came via the Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Program. The land preserve, the total preserved land accounts for 89.5% of the master plan 2020 goal towards 80,000 preserved acres. And here you can see, um, the location of all the preserved lands. The dots represent where the additions from 2024 were located. And that is the end of the presentation for me. Are there any questions?
Now, I see that 93% or so of the, uh, of the development is inside of the urdle. Obviously, I know it's a, a sensitive topic to the, the actual parameters of the urdle. Is there any expectation or any plans to, to move the urdle? I know some of it's even on 695. Um, is there any plans to move that?
I don't know of the county's plans to move the urdle. Um, that would, I believe, be up to council to let that happen. Um, I do want to point out, though, that, um, the land use capacity analysis that we perform does not include, um, potential redevelopment. Um, so that's where you could see a lot of potential new units showing up, even though there isn't, um, vacant land or land that could be, um, uh, sort of padded with more development.
Mr. Tennant, if I may, uh, there are no pending petitions to change the urdle line. Uh, there has been an inquiry about, uh, extending the urdle off of, uh, Windsor Mill Road to accommodate a single property. Uh, but there is no, there are no other petitions or requests to expand the urdle. As we all know, all of those who have seen the, um, county council actions recently, uh, there appears to be increasing reluctance to consider alterations to the urdle as it is now.
Thank you.
Ms. Profi.
Um, thank you, Mr. Weaver, for the presentation. Um, just a quick question. I was trying to follow along on our PDF, which I know is substantially longer than your PowerPoint, but the development capacity slide that you had, I didn't see that detail in there. Is that in our information as well, and I miss it?
It's, it, it's mentioned in the report itself. Um, I just made mention of it. It's not listed on the slide itself, though.
Okay, is there any way?
Page 33 of the report, Emily.
Thank you so much, Director Lafferty. Is there any way, as you were kind of going through, um, some of the charts and items that you were talking about, is there any way we can get some of those year-over-year comparisons that you were letting us know? Like, you know, these numbers of permits in '24 versus '23 and '22, as well as, you know, the preservation acreage? Is there any way we can get some of that information?
Well, so the, uh, numbers from past years would be in previous reports on growth.
Right.
And the-
But there's no, like, um, there's no just, like, simple year-over-year comparison type chart that we can see?
Um, it depends on the number you're looking for, but probably it's more, those are more numbers that we've had through the years, and we just mention them in the successive reports on growth to sort of just give an idea of how the current year or last year compared to previous years.
What years would you be looking for, so we can, are you particular period of time you're looking for, Ms. Profi, that we could bring to you, and is it residential, commercial? What is it? If you could specify, we can see how that can be done.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate it. Just '22 and '23 would be great, just kind of the last three years, so we can kind of see how things have progressed from '22 through '24, especially because we just passed master plan last year, and obviously that'll, you know, affect growth through 2030. Um, so it would just be nice to kind of see the couple of years in comparison. Um, and then in that same, like, development capacity you're mentioning, you said we would reach capacity within the urdle within nine to 24 years, but that is not taking into account those new CCC and MU overlays, right?
Right. So our, like I, like I said, the, um, our analysis only considers vacant land or underdeveloped land and, and to see what could sort of fill out in those available spaces. It does not consider, um, redevelopment. Um, and there were a lot of new, especially mixed-use, um, districted lands that came out of the following CZMP or the 2024 CZMP. Um, I know that when Jen ran the analysis, she sort of like did just an initial try at seeing what the number of units could be developed from those areas, and it's just like, we don't really have the ability to determine what a realistic number would be on those, in those new areas.
Got it. And that's why you have, like, the moderate to full capacity? Because it just depends on the project and, and what ends up happening? Is that, is that the difference kind of in that chart between those two?
Well, well, so the moderate is the, um, sort of the normal buildout that we see based on the zoning density and everything, and then-
I write-
capacity is full zoning, which doesn't happen. Um, not, neither of those numbers take into account redevelopment.
Okay.
So it's, it's the lower and higher ends, or the moderate and higher ends of what could be developed on vacant or underdeveloped land.
And, and if I may, it doesn't take into account if the property has other forest buffer or environmental constraints. Uh, the zoning may allow 10 units, but because of other environmental or other factors, you may only get six. So you have to take each property by itself, which is why you have that wide range, as Chris described.
Okay, that, that's helpful, uh, uh, because that's what I was trying to understand. I was like, man, that is a huge range between the two. Thank you.
Mr. Hinton.
Uh, yes, thank you again for the presentation. Very informative. Um, one of my questions wa, was going to be around the schools, and you may have answered this. I was switching from my phone to the computer, so I apologize if you did answer this. But it, I did notice on your list, the majority of the schools are in Eastern Baltimore County, probably about 13 of them on that list. Is there a plan, uh, obviously, you know, finances is a big deal, right? When you're talking about building new schools and things of that nature, but is there a plan when it comes to land use? Because Eastern Baltimore County is not that much land over here, but the land that is available seems to continue to be pushed by a lot of the communities to be preserved. Is there a plan, um, for, for schools, building or repurposing older buildings to try to alleviate some of the overcrowding on the east side with the land constraints?
I would have to defer to public schools on that.
Okay.
In my I-PASS, uh, um, project, uh, Mr. Hinton may give some indication about redevelopment of existing school sites or adding capacity on those sites. Um, but we could ask even more specifically of BCPS if they have identified particularly east side properties for that kind of redevelopment or additional school capacity.
I, I think that would be helpful. I think the last one that we heard potentially would have been the Lafarge Project, which, as we know, was met by a lot of resistance. So trying to find what land we can build on is always difficult. I appreciate it.
Ms. Meneses, you have your hand up.
Yes, I actually have, um, like, a couple of questions based on the annual report. The first one was in the introductory, uh, paragraph. There was mention that, um, state's priority funding area corresponded with the, with the urdle. I wasn't sure what that meant.
So, um, I forget how many years ago, I, maybe in the past five years, we basically worked with the state to, um, make sure that the urdle and the, um, priority funding area, which is the state's line, basically are, um, the same. So that way, whenever we use, we use our urdle as our, as our sort of urban rural split, the state sees it the same way now.
Okay.
Ms. Meneses, the, uh, priority funding areas were established, like, in 1998, and that's where the, under smart growth principles, the state decided it was going to direct its, uh, investments. Um, and each jurisdiction then had to identify what was their PFA priority funding area. The county initially had a smaller area, but I think wisely, as Chris just said, expanded it to include the entire urdle. So it's to coincide with where state investments can also be prioritized to take place.
Okay, so they focus, the state focuses within the urdle, not outside of it? I guess. Oh, okay.
That's not to say, like, state roads, like, 795 and others that are out, or that go outside the Beltway, outside the urdle, don't get state investments, but the prioritizing of other investments throughout the entire, uh, state budget would be within the urdle.
Okay, my other question was, um, on page 18 of the report, there was mention of, they were talking about, um, the water, water supply and sewage plan. And in September of 2024, there was one petition for a designated amendment. That was eventually the county planning board voted to against any changes. Um, just for edification, what, what kind of, um, designation amendment was, was asked for?
Chris, isn't this the one that was over in the southwest on Gun Road? Um, that was sort of adjacent to the, uh, urdle line? There's a project down, I, I believe, like, in the lower southwest part of the county, and they do not, they are on public septic, excuse me, on well and septic and wanted to be connected to public water. Uh, but they were outside the urdle, and therefore we did not support that.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Guess what he said? Thanks, Steve.
Other questions? If not, I have a couple. Um, I always do. Um, and some of them are sort of follow-ups to what some of the other people raised. The Table 21, the development capacity, does that take into account the restrictions, uh, the adequate facilities laws that we put into place? So like, if schools are overcrowded, i, is that adjusted for?
Sorry, can you repeat which, which, which slide are we on, or which, uh?
Table 21, the one that showed the development capacity that-
Development capacity.
About.
Okay, so the, let me find it here, because I have notes on that, too.
I, I believe that's just raw land. Isn't it just vacant property, uh, Chris, that you take into account for the capacity issues? So whether or not APFO would limit development isn't a factor. It's just looking at the open opportunity.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, for development capacity, that's, that's unrelated to, um, schools.
So it's possible that that number could be lower than what it's currently showing?
Yes. Yeah, as far as I know, the model doesn't include, um, capacity, school capacity.
I wasn't sure, because I talked about taking into account growth tiers and several other qualifications, so I, I wasn't sure if that was incorporated or not. Um, so that's just something to be taken into account, that that, even the moderate capacity may be a, a, a higher projection than what's currently available. Um, along similar lines, I'm assuming you got the school capacity numbers from the school system?
Um. Yes.
Yes.
So the ones, yeah, the, uh, the ones in the longer tables in the, in the-
Yeah, yeah.
Report itself.
Because I'm, do we have any idea why some of the schools have changed, sometimes substantially, in their state-rated capacity? Um, and I was looking, like, one of the schools around here, Berkshire Elementary, uh, 588 students capacity this year, but last year's report was 631. Essex Elementary went from 520 last year to 448, which is why it's now showing as being over capacity. If it still had the 520, it would still be just at capacity. So, a, again, I, I, I'm sure you guys are just taking the numbers as you're being given, but I, a decent number, I mean, it wasn't like half of the schools, but a decent number of the schools that I was, just started to look at and compare, the, the numbers changed. In some cases, you know, 30, 40, 50 students, and that seems like a lot. So, I, if at some point someone could figure out why that's happening, that would be, that would be useful.
Can I jump in and ask that? Oh, sorry.
Um. I also agree with, with, with Emily. It would be great if we could have some trend lines, you know? For example, as you stated, I mean, I was, I, I'm a nerd. I actually have the reports going back to 2015, and I was looking at them. And so Table 3, if you look at the occupancy numbers, you know, it was like 1,500, 1,400, 1,800, you know, for most of the, you know, 2015 through, um, and even through COVID, the, the occupancy rates were relatively high, but the past two years, they've really dropped, and I think having some sort of trend line to see, uh, like, words, and I don't know if this is something real, or, you know, it's what this indicates, but it's, it seems in terms of the number of new housing units we're adding. Um.
Mr. Luke, I'd be interested in maybe Mr. Schulman or someone who's been involved, or even Mr. Heckman, someone who's been involved in, so the development side of things is, I'm sure there's some lag time. Uh, and I'm not sure that a project started in 2020 in COVID, if that got delayed and therefore occupant. I mean, I'm, I, I don't know if those of members of the board who have been involved with development activities have any sense of why those numbers may be so different over the years. Be inter, I'd be curious.
The nu, the numbers are definitely old that the developers use, because like you said, they start the project, you know, years, years prior to it coming to light with this, the community. And I think another thing to consider, too, is the, the staff, the staffing changes at the schools each, each year. So if the, if this, if BCPS is not going to provide, for argument's sake, 100 teachers this year for one school, and they're going to 95 teachers, that's going to impact the amount of students that they, in theory, can, can hold.
Yeah, I, I don't know about the last 10 years, but definitely in the last several years, um, because of the interest rates. Um, it's, uh, a lot less is being, being done the last couple of years because of the interest rates.
Really more construction costs.
And construction costs.
And then my last question or sort of comment. And again, I, I realize this is a state mandated report, and- And again, I, I realize this is a state mandated report and a lot of this is to provide what the state wants, but but I would be curious to, and I don't think we ever get this, is, you know, more of a, a sense of how is the housing market doing? Um, I mean, do you guys have access to the same kind of information that like the realtors have? You know, I've seen people post online recently that Baltimore County, the Baltimore region, we've got about a, a little over a one month of worth of housing inventory, which is lower than what you would typically want in a healthy housing market. It's just a very tight housing market. Um, I would think from census, we should be able to get ratios of, you know, median house value, uh, average rents to, to income ratios. And how has that been changing over time? Again, I suspect it's going to show that we have a tight housing market with rather expensive housing. And I don't know what, if it's this report, but I don't think we ever get that kind of, of information or analysis and might be useful to have.
I don't have an answer for that.
More of a, more of a request for future years. I'm not asking for anything to be changed in this report.
Mr. Luca, as you point out, this is basically tracking what the state has required us to do, but I think if there's other data or information that either our office or our office could coordinate with other agencies that, you know, the board would find valuable, we could have that conversation.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Weaver?
I just have a quick question, actually. It just seems like, and, and I'm not a single family developer, so it, it's not really my world, but it just seems like the number is, is so low for Baltimore County. How does it compare to the other counties in Maryland? I guess just in terms of, you know, single family detached houses that are built in a year. I mean, do, do we look at other counties and, and compare?
Um, for the purposes of this report, no, we did not look at that. That may be a number that Baltimore County has somewhere. But I don't have it right here.
To understand what the rest of the state is, is looking at and doing.
Well, I know the, uh, the state D H C D is under, is, uh, doing a housing assessment at this point in time. Uh, they may be in the best position to evaluate or assess the comparatives across the different jurisdictions. Um, our county D H C D may also have some of that data. Um, but I don't know, they focus on House Hartford County's development prog, progress and unit availability as opposed to Carroll or someplace else, but like I said, state D H C D is doing their own assessment at this time.
And I, I know that just what I read in the paper, it sounds like a number of the surrounding counties, Ha- Howard County, Hartford County, et cetera, are facing limits of how much developable land they have left given. They've been going through these same sorts of exercises. So, so I, I take your question of how much has happened in the past, but also how much is projected to be able to, to go forward.
John, were you, were you, were you specific, were you asking more about, uh, single families versus townhomes or just overall permits in general?
I first look at the single family period because I think that that is just a number that, that's way too low for Baltimore County. But when I look at, I obviously want to see the numbers for overall, um, and how that compares. But for, for me, I look at the single family first.
As I think Mr. Lafferty pointed out, the, the county's Department of Housing is in the process and I think we'll have it done shortly, sort of a, a housing assessment report that hopefully will, um, get a report on.
And if I may, I, I think the numbers do reflect why the master plan twenty thirty has focused on retrofitting. That the demand for housing and the ability to grow as a jurisdiction is going to depend upon um, a few things. One, we think primarily is the retrofitting and the redevelopment of older properties. Um, so it really will require a different kind of strategy than the county's engaged in previously. And that's not to say that the market won't dictate what or where units are built. But the ability and therefore the cost of redevelopment, and those of you involved in the industry know this, the redevelopment is expensive. So, um, how do you offset that and still facilitate the, the construction of units to accommodate families and uh, single individuals who no longer need to be in a large, you know, three or four bedroom house? So it's a challenge.
And this is clearly an issue that the Moore administration has been tackling the, the last couple of years with various housing initiatives, some of which have passed, some of which haven't, but, you know, I think they're recognizing, you know, the state as a whole is, is barely growing. Most of the growth that we see nationwide is in, you know, places like Texas and Florida and North Carolina. So lots of issues there. Again, unless anybody else has questions for Mr. Weaver, I want to thank him for the presentation. As I said, we will be voting on, on this report at our next meeting in May. Next, we will get a report from the March thirteenth and April tenth meetings of the Landmark Preservation Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, at their March thirteenth meeting, the Landmarks Preservation Commission voted to issue four certificates of appropriateness to the following properties. The Hadaway property located at four nine four six Tulip Avenue in Relay. The Hart property located at four ten Fairmount Avenue in Towson. The Carnival property located at eight hundred Francis Avenue in Halethorpe. And the Rogne House located at one four nine four three York Road in Sparks. At their April tenth meeting, the Landmarks Preservation Commission voted to issue seven certificates of appropriateness to the following properties. The Mond property located at fifteen fifty-four South Rolling Ray, South Rolling Road in Halethorpe. The Hammond property located at seven ten Cliveton Road in Pikesville. The Mitchell property located at twenty-one oh one Mount Carmel Road in Parkden. The Scott property located at three one five Central Avenue in Glendon. The Schulman property located at six one four Milford Mill Road in Pikesville. The Wheaton property located at two oh seven West Seminary Avenue in Lutherville. And a Baltimore County property located at one nine three five Black Riverneck Road in Essex, and that concludes the report.
Thank you. Um, I also want to put a pitch in here. By statute, the Landmarks Preservation Commission includes one member of the Baltimore County Planning Board. I've been in that role for the past four years. I'd love to be able to step off. I've had a lot of other stuff I, I want to do. If any of, uh, new older board members are at all interested, the landmarks, they meet once a month, nine or ten times a year. Uh, it's typically the second Tuesday, that second Thursday falls in between our meetings. They are virtual. I will say the one, one big difference is, you know, the votes of the landmarks commission are much more final. Um, you know, if, if they don't approve something, I don't think there's any way to appeal that. So, um, anyone's interested in, in historic preservation and landmarks issues and would like to serve as the, the representative of the planning board, you know, contact myself or Ms. Meneses?
I was going to volunteer, yes.
That would be great. Uh, I will get in touch with you after, after the meeting.
Okay.
That would be wonderful. I appreciate that.
And Mr. Luca let us know if, if that's the direction the board wants to go because it would be a county executive appointee. And we need to allow, enable the county executive to know the, this change.
I didn't realize that. All right. Great. Uh, I also want to note for the record, I see that Ms. Panero has joined us as well. So, so thank you, Katie. I didn't, didn't see you there initially.
No worries. I was a little late.
That's, that's fine. Um, uh, next, uh, we will hear from recent county council legislation pertinent to the board.
All right, bear with me. These are a doozy. We've got, we've got a lot. I do have, I'm going to read a slightly abbreviated version. If you have questions, please refer to the full report, um, and then also all of these bills and resolutions have been sent to you. Bill thirteen twenty-five zoning regulations, tattoo or body piercing establishments for the purpose of amending the B C Z R to permit a tattoo or body, body piercing establishment by right in the B R zone in certain areas of the Baltimore National Pike Commercial Revitalization District, exempting a tattoo or body piercing establishment from certain proximity restrictions and generally relating to tattoo or body piercing establishment establishments and uses permitted in the B R zone. Bill fourteen twenty-five zoning regulations uses permitted in the M L Zone Automotive Enthusiast Club for the purpose of defining an automotive enthusiast club permitting by right an automotive enthusiast, enthusiast club under certain circumstances in the M L Zone and generally relating to uses permitted in the M L Zone. Bill fifteen twenty-five zoning regulations uses permitted in the B M C T District elderly housing facilities and overcrowded schools for the purpose of permitting apartments and age restricted fifty-five years and older independent dwelling units, housing for the elderly, assisted living facilities or continuing care facilities in any story of a building in the B M C T District in certain areas of the county, rendering the overcrowded schools district provision not applicable to development of age restricted and generally relating to uses permitted in the B M C T District. Bill sixteen twenty-five zoning regulations uses permitted in the R C five zone, combination of farm and non-farm uses for the purpose of permitting by rights, certain combinations of Christmas tree farms and plumbing, mechanical and utility companies or combinations of farms and auxiliary small business uses in certain areas of the Resource Conservation Five, R C five zone and generally relating to farm, farm and non-farm uses permitted in the R C five zone. Bill nineteen twenty-five County Charter, Baltimore County Farmland Preservation Act for the purpose of amending the county charter to state that any changes, revisions or amendments to the boundaries of the urban rural demarcation line, the Erdle, shall require approval by a certain threshold of affirmative votes of the county council. Amending the county charter to clarify that except for considerations of the boundaries of the Erdle, other matters such as a plan, zoning map, rule or regulation that was recommended for adoption, amendment or repeal by the Department of Planning, the Planning Board or the Zoning Commissioner shall be approved by a simple majority of a legislative act of the county council. Amending the definition of the Erdle in the zoning regulations contingent upon the passage and ratification of the county charter amendment by the voters of Baltimore County and generally relating to the county charter. Pursuant to section twelve oh two of the Baltimore County Charter, the question of whether or not the charter is to be amended by, as the, as proposed by this act, shall be submitted to the voters of Baltimore County at the general election in November of twenty twenty-six. Upon ratification by the voters of Baltimore County, this act shall become effective thirty days following the twenty twenty-six general election. Bill twenty twenty-five parking of recreational vehicles on public roads for the purpose of transferring a prohibition of parking a recreational vehicle on public roads from the zoning regulations to the county code and generally relating to parking of recreational vehicles on public roads. Resolution ten twenty-five, adoption of the Baltimore County Landscape Manual. A resolution of the Baltimore County Council to adopt the Baltimore County Landscape Manual as approved by the Planning Board on January sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. Resolution eleven twenty-five, adoption of the Baltimore County Local Open Space Manual. A resolution of the Baltimore County Council to adopt the Baltimore County Open Space Manual as approved by the Planning Board on January sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. Resolution twelve twenty-five, adoption of the Reisterstown Streetscape Action Plan and Design Guidelines. A resolution of the Baltimore County Council to adopt and incorporate the Reisterstown Streetscape Action Plan as an amendment to the Baltimore County Master Plan twenty thirty and to adopt and incorporate the Reisterstown Streetscape Design Guidelines into the Comprehensive Manual of Development Policies. Both documents are as approved by the Planning Board on January sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. Resolution thirteen twenty-five, review of the Greater Middle, Middle River Design Guidelines. A resolution of the Baltimore County Council requesting that one, the Baltimore County Department of Planning review the Greater Middle River Design Guidelines developed by the Essex Middle River Civic Council and submit the design guidelines to the Planning Board for review. And two, the Baltimore County Planning Board review the design guidelines and submit to the council a recommendation to adopt them as an addition to the Comprehensive Manual of Development Policies. Resolution fifteen twenty-five, amending the boundary of the Baltimore National Pike Commercial Revitalization District. A resolution of the Baltimore County Council for the purpose of amending the boundary of the Baltimore National Pike Commercial Revitalization District. The expansion is fourteen acres and is shown on exhibit A, which was sent to you. Resolution seventeen twenty-five, White Marsh Commercial Revitalization District. A resolution of the Baltimore County Council to establish the White Marsh Commercial Revitalization District, which totals eighty-nine acres and seeks to provide incentives to encourage the redevelopment of property in and around the White Marsh, White Marsh Mall Regional Commercial Node as defined by Master Plan twenty thirty. Resolution eighteen twenty-five, supporting request for the Main Street Maryland designation by the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development. A resolution of the Baltimore County Council supporting the request for the Main Street Maryland designation for Towson. Towson Main Street Collective has volunteered to implement a comprehensive revitalization strategy based on the Main Street Maryland program to strengthen the economic potential of the historic downtown and neighborhood businesses of District, District of Towson. The county council endorses and supports the Main Street Maryland designation. Resolution nineteen twenty-five, adoption and incorporation of the Jacksonville Community Plan, Master Plan twenty thirty. A resolution of the Baltimore County Council to adopt and incorporate the Jacksonville Community Plan as approved by the Planning Board on February twentieth, twenty twenty-five as an amendment to Master Plan twenty thirty. Resolution twenty twenty-five, approval of the Maryland Rural Legacy Plan Applications. A resolution to approve and rank three rural legacy area plan applications submitted to the Maryland Department of Natural Resources for consideration and approval by the Maryland Rural Legacy Board for funding in fiscal year twenty twenty-six. The plans include Gunpowder Valley Manor and Tiny Run Watershed Rural Legacy Areas. And finally, resolution twenty-one twenty-five, overhead transmission lines, Brandon Shores Retirement Mitigation Project. A resolution of the Baltimore County Council urging all land titling issues to be resolved before active work begins on the Brandon Shores Mitigation Project, including modification of the one hundred and fifty foot wide right of way set aside for the Susquehanna Transmission Company for the erection and maintenance of electrical transmission line. And that concludes the report.
Congratulations. That was a lot.
I'm done reading. No more.
Sure. Take a, take a breath, take a drink. Thank you very much, Ms. Bensley, for, for that. This is the conclusion of our agenda. Uh, before we sign off though, I do want to reiterate, I want to thank those. As you know, we, we are sort of in a, a more quiet period. C Z M P is over for now. Master Plan is done. C I P is done for a while. And so I put out a, a request that, you know, we may have, use this time to look at some sort of broader issues such as reviewing what happened at the C Z M P, reviewing the housing plan when it becomes available and things of that sort. Everyone should have gotten an email about it. Some of you have, have sent in some additional requests. If anybody has any other thoughts, questions, please let us know. Um, Emily and I will work with Steve and the planning staff to see how we can start to schedule some of those kind of, of sessions. Mr. Array.
Yeah, I, so I just wanted to mention that, uh, Mr. Johnson lost his mom last, last month. Uh, so I just wanted to make that known to the board members.
Uh, I, our condolences, Mr. Johnson. I did not know. Uh, oh, let me also add for those of you who've been on for a while, I, I saw a former member, Kathy Wolfson just the other night. She sends her regards. She misses us, but not the meetings. Do I have a motion to adjourn the board meeting?
Motion.
All those approve. Thank you very much. Uh, I will, we will see everyone either virtually or in person in a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Good night.